Councilor Williams, here. Morgan?
Present.
West?
Present.
Jacobs?
Present.
Mayor Kirpin?
Present.
Move for approval minutes.
Don't move.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes. This time we're in the podium for public comments. We have public comments at this time. You can go to the microphone, give your name or address and state your comment. We'll consider it.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman James Turner, 01 West 24th Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. I have a question in regards to item number 13, the authorizing the sale of real property to AgriKind Hemp, which is basically the medical marijuana facility that is on 291. And just out of clarity, and we really look to hear from all the members of council, the given the fact that we know that the governor is about to, was looking at making anyone who has medical marijuana be able to also sell and distribute recreational marijuana. And given the fact that in every community that this has been done, from Colorado to Oregon to Washington State, there's been great impact on communities as it relates to crime and schools and things like that. Has Mayor and Council considered those things? And is there, what is the benefit of this sale and this company being in the city at this particular time? Is there a financial benefit to the city? I know that they have a hundred jobs that they are making available. I know that those jobs were qualified beyond local people. It was professionals that were getting those jobs. So I just need to hear what is the, what is the benefit to the city of Chester as it relates to medical marijuana?
Mr. Solicitor, would you like to comment on some of these?
Yes. Medical marijuana is a state law and applicants have the right to apply and get licenses in certain districts throughout the state. So many licenses were awarded. A license was awarded to this particular entity in that section in this location of the city. And as a result of that, and as a result of this zoning, et cetera, that use is perfectly permissible under state law.
One hundred percent, no problems. My question is, what is the financial benefit? This is a $1.7 billion industry. It is not producing any significant jobs for the residents of Chester and has the potential to create great harm for the young people of the city as well as put additional burden on our police force based on where it has been done and other places. So my question is simply, from a financial standpoint, is there a financial benefit to the residents of the city of Chester for this company being here? Or is it just here?
There is a financial benefit to the residents. There are taxes, there are jobs.
No, any other kind of agreement that has been made? So they're just paying regular taxes for this, for the ground that they have? Nothing, no kind of, not a, not a deal like Covanta pays five million or Harris that pays 10 million or anything like that?
They're paying what they're required to pay by law. They have to prove the property. Therefore, more tax would be due on the property than is due before. There will be earned income taxes where our jobs are available.
That is, that is correct. As you know, the property was non, was non-taxable prior to when that company coming in and decided to bring that facility and that company here. So yes, there is a financial benefit to that. As the solicitor mentioned, earned income taxes. About last month, they had roughly about 60 to 80 individuals from the city of Chester came downstairs and sat in front of their CEO and other human resource individuals to apply for the jobs available at that facility. So there is going to be a financial benefit to the city of Chester and to most importantly, to the residents of the city of Chester.
So the residents being those that are working there?
Sorry, say it again.
So you're saying that the, those that will get a job there are benefiting from it? But there's no, I'm just trying to be clear, there's no agreement as in other industries like, that are out here like gaming and these other things where they're paying a fee or something else instead? You've already answered the question, you said no, so that's fine. Thank you.
And Mr. Turner, I, that's, that's the first that I've heard. I mean, I know about Colorado and some places in California that there's this exorbitant burden, I mean, or let's say absorbing shifting crime because of recreational marijuana. Could you provide, now I would just, you have to go back to the microphone.
Yes, sir, I can provide you with, okay. I see a bunch of videos and I'll release them. Okay. So I'll do that.
All right.
Good evening, Congresswoman, 01 Chestnut Street in Chester. I have a couple of questions. And my first question is, what are you doing about the streets and bridges that have been shut down and not reopened over an extended period of time?
They're still being repaired.
They're not being repaired. Nobody's working on them.
So they're being, they're being repaired. Ten doctors working on the bridges and they're working on them at the time. They have to fix one bridge before they get to the next.
Well, well, they're not fixing the bridges before they close down another one, which is my concern. Potter Street Bridge has been closed over two years and the fences are still up. Nobody's worked on it. They started working at the bottom of Chestnut Street. They put up lights. They haven't worked on Chestnut Street in about a month now. They closed the bridge again on, over 95 on Chestnut Street. They had closed that bridge over a year ago, opened it. It was supposed to be fixed when they opened it. They closed it again on Monday. I have not seen one person up there working on that bridge since they closed it. They closed the off ramp to Chestnut Street a while ago. Wyler University had that ramp opened for a week for their students and their students' parents. They have access to their campus. I'm wondering how come Wyler University can get the bridge open for their use, but it can't be open for the use of the residents of the city?
Mr. Attorney, what I'll do. My engineer is not here, but I will get you an updated report on what's going on with the bridges. I know that the work has not been completed. And yes, Wyler did get special permission for the kids to move in, but it was closed again and they're still working on the bridges. But I will get you, I, none of us can answer as to when they're going to be open, but I can get you an updated report. You and I talk all the time, we communicate all the time. So I'll get Mike Delonte, my engineer, and I'll give you a report.
Okay, because it's not an issue with the bridge being closed. It's an issue with the bridges and streets being closed and I can't see any work being done. Like the workers just disappear and then they go and tear up another street.
I'll get you a report.
Okay. My next question is, what's being done about all these shootings taking place in the city? How is a preventive measure being put in place for that?
There are a number of things that we are doing throughout the city. Our law enforcement personnel has been very active. We are now instituting some things called seatbelt checkpoints whereby we hope to, if we are stopping vehicles and checking to see if persons have their seatbelts on or off, trained, I will notice a person might be nervous and carrying a weapon. But also, our officers, officers have been very aggressive in dealing with some of our young people who may be in and around our schools and what have you. But most of all, we also put out there an app, a police app, and hoping that person would use that police app in order to provide information concerning any type of criminal activity to our law enforcement personnel. We also have put in place a $10,000 reward that no one has yet put up, no one has yet used concerning crime, criminal activity in our community. The best thing that we hope to do, because a lot of folks would like to see a police officer on every corner, unfortunately, we don't have that kind of man or woman power. I, I was just looking at the statistics in Chicago where they have about 3,000 police officers, 3,000. And what folks don't really understand is that it's not police officers and personnel that stop the crime, but it really is the persons within the community that help our law enforcement personnel deal with criminal activity in our communities. A lot of these young shooters are now 12, 13, 14 years old. And we've been asking parents to be more involved in their lives, their young. Check their rooms, check who they're hanging out with, check their social media pages. We've been asking our community to help us better police our young people by policing their very young. And so we're going to continue to do that. We're, we're in the process of putting out cameras throughout our community as well.
Okay, so my next question is, it's about the parking meters. I did notice that a kiosk machine went up on 7th Street in municipal parking. And, I believe it's Chief Garcia. My issue with that is, with that happening, this morning at my job, we had an issue where by the time the workers in my building got to work, pretty much all the parking spots in our parking lot had already been taken. So I don't know, is there something in place? Because I know that the police department uses that parking lot. Is there something in place for them where they would not have to pay $9 a day to park, which would cause them to start parking in the parking lot that is for the Department of Public Welfare?
Our police officers would not be parking in the parking, public welfare.
They already do.
Well, they won't be doing it anymore.
Thank you.
They will.
Seeing no one else at the podium, please.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Ron Dennis Scott, 223 East 13th Street, Chester, PA, 1903. Number two, Kay Percy, 2612 McCary Street, Chester, PA, 1903. And number three, Deborah Corr, 2319 West 4th Street, Chester, PA, 1903. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, it has been determined that the aforementioned individuals have met all the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize appropriate city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 200 block of East 13th Street, in the 2600 block of McCary Street, and in 2300 block of West 4th Street in the city of Chester.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams? Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratifying the appointment of Harriet Ward to the position of Secretary, Department of Public Affairs, effective September 9th, 2019, with a 60-day probationary period with no benefits and the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratifying the appointment of Celestine Toulous to the position of Administrative Assistant, Department of Public Safety, effective September 2nd, 2019, with a 30-day probationary period and the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratifying the appointment of the following individuals as temporary per diem laborers, Department of Streets and Public Improvements, beginning August 31st, 2019, and ending October 31st, 2019, at the rate of $9.25 per hour with no benefits not to exceed 29.5 hours per week. Jerome Davis, Aaron Knox, John Robertson, and Sean Robertson.
So moved.
I second. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratifying the appointment of the following individuals as temporary per diem laborers, Department of Parks, Public Property and Recreation, beginning August 31st, 2019, and ending October 31st, 2019, at the rate of $9.25 per hour with no benefits not to exceed 29.5 hours per week. George Clark Jr., Okoria Craig Deal, and Maurice Nelson.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratifying the appointment of Jerrell Horst to the position of temporary per diem laborer, Department of Parks, Public Property and Recreation, beginning September 9th, 2019, and ending October 31st, 2019, at the rate of $9.25 per hour with no benefits not to exceed 29.5 hours per week.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint the following individuals to the position of Fire Cadet, Chester Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety, effective September 18th, 2019, at an hourly rate of $10 per hour on a per diem basis, not to exceed 40 hours a week with no benefits. Jamil Church, Mohammed Andy, Ronald Thompson, Emmanuel Duff, and Andre Grant. Further, that the appointment of said individuals as Fire Cadets for the city is contingent upon satisfactory completion of all training, evaluations, and testing required to graduate from the Philadelphia Fire Academy forces that apply skills required by the Chester Fire Department. Further, upon graduation, said employment with the city as an apprentice firefighter shall be based upon availability. Further, if said individual, individuals are employed as firefighters for the city of Chester, said individuals are required to reside in the city of Chester for the first three years of employment. Any firefighter not residing in the city of Chester must do so within 90 days of their date of hire as a permanent employee and must submit proof of residency to the Human Resource Department.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the adoption of a TV, film, and video production permit policy and application to provide guidelines for effective coordination of filming and videotaping of television and feature productions.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas in order to promote and enhance public safety, as a part of the city of Chester's camera initiative, the city desires to install security cameras on various properties throughout the city of Chester. And whereas the various property owners are willing to permit the city to use their property solely for the purpose of installing security cameras. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize appropriate city officials to enter into licensed agreements for the installation of security cameras at various locations throughout the city of Chester with the following owners, Drake W. Kent, Bar Crown LLC, and Flower Street Realty, Realty LP.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor, Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, being resolved by authority of Council of the City of Chester, Delaware County, and it is hereby resolved by authority of the city that the mayor of said municipality be authorized to direct appropriate city officials to sign a winter traffic services agreement for the 2019, 2020 season four and on behalf of the city of Chester.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby grant permission and authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to PICO for the installation of 325 feet electrical conduit on Brunner Street within the city of Chester. Further, said permit is contingent upon PICO's compliance with all the conditions outlined by the city engineer and performed in a manner that is satisfactory to city council, specifically the following. Number one, PICO performs a half with middle and overlay of the roadway upon completion of the work. And number two, PICO contracted revised traffic control flaggers to ensure a continuous operation of city streets.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve entering into the memorandum of understanding between the city of Chester Police Department and the Chester Upper East School District to establish procedures to be followed with certain incidents as described in the memorandum of understanding which may occur on school property at any school sponsor activity or on a conveyance as described in the State Schools Act. Further, that it does hereby authorize police commissioner to execute said memorandum of understanding for and on behalf of the city of Chester.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the redevelopment authority of the city of Chester desires to sell the aforementioned properties to AgriKind Hemp LLC. And whereas the redevelopment authority of the city of Chester has requested that the city of Chester consent to the sale of the property. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize and consent to the sale of the following real properties from the redevelopment authority of the city of Chester to AgriKind Hemp LLC. We have addresses of Lamoken Street of 100, 106, 108, 110, 112 through 114, 116, 118, 120, 122, 124, and 126. And the following addresses for Montgomery Street, 101, 103, 109, 113, 125, and 127. Further, that the appropriate designated officers are hereby authorized to execute and deliver such agreements, deeds, transfer tax affidavits, or other documents as may be necessary or appropriate to consummate the sale of the properties under terms and conditions as set by Chester City Council.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas under recommendation of the redevelopment authority of the city of Chester, the Chester City Council approved a short-term lease agreement with an 18-month purchase option for certain real estate parcels located in the 100 blocks of Church and Norris Streets with Agronomie Pharmaceuticals LLC. And whereas said authority has determined at this time it will be in the city's best interest to terminate this agreement. And whereas Section 1709K of the Urban Redevelopment Law requires the approval of Chester City Council prior to entering into an agreement. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the recommendation by redevelopment authority of the city of Chester determining the short-term lease agreement with an 18-month purchase option of Agronomie Pharmaceuticals LLC and enter into a commercial lease of option to purchase with Agronomie Biologics Holdings Incorporated for the real estate parcels known as 100 through 134 Norris Street and 101 through 135 Church Street. Further, it does hereby authorize appropriate officials to execute all documents necessary for said agreement upon final review and approval of the city's solicitor.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin? Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accountants and Finance and is shown in its expenditure approval list dated August 30th, 2019, attached herein to and made apart thereof subject to approval by the Department of Accountants and Finance.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Bill number five and ordinance, An Ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Amending the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester to repeal Article 535 entitled Residential Parking Permit in its entirety.
I move that we pass bill number five on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number five on its first reading. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Bill number six and ordinance, An Ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 511 entitled Traffic Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, to create merchant parking zones and residential permit parking programs and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass bill number six on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number six on its first reading. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Bill number seven and ordinance, An Ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending subsection 503.01 entitled Duty and Traffic Direction to grant the Chester Park Authority the authority to civilly enforce violations of the Parking Traffic Code and renewing subsection 503.09 and replacing it with a new subsection, 503.09, providing for the administration and adjudication of parking violations and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass bill number seven on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number seven on its first reading. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirpin?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
At this time, let's begin to open up the microphone for public comments. If you have public comments, may I would you state your name, your address, and your public comment? And I expect you will buy by a few minutes. So certainly we want to stay connected. Salvation, and certainly that salvation is very important, you know, it's very important. Salvation, we don't believe, I'm sorry, sir, just wanted to clear. We do not want to be denied our salvation nor to be denied our salvation. So we want to work in terms of salvation, that's our salvation. There's two minds working in America here. It's almost like if you will, some idolatical world that. Man has a, he has an idea that he's trying to push and promote, push. And God has an idea. So there's two somewhat opposing ideologies working. So we want to be with the right idea that our Lord has for us. This is going to be a benefit, a great benefit for everything that we do in a way of acknowledging knowledge and understanding of doing these things. So God says, when the light step along, that's something else, but let me say this. God says, when the sun rises in the west, and we know the school days, you know, sunrise rising in the east and so forth. But what is this saying, when the sun rises in the west, God has a plan for the west himself? So we want to be in touch with that. Certainly we want to get in touch with that. We will continue, maybe make some effort that we stay connected with that and clear, you know, in tune with that to stay connected with that. We, the people, you know, and we want to look at everything that, you know, there's two, uh, Russian, two motivations that we will, that this can apply to, that it doesn't apply. We, even once you know and feel that you are what is supposed to be happening in America here and all over the world and in yourself, then this is automatic, as I said, in the sense that it give you a choice that you are, you know, one with a great responsibility. So we want to feel more this, we want to be, you know, we, the people, you know. Certainly, sir, I did have time to go with my giant, so busy out here, but in short of time, we will continue becoming clear. We want to stay, at local times, child, stay put, stay pushed, certainly want to stay put. And God put us here, certainly we do want to stay put. I thank you, I certainly know that, I wasn't wrong. Thank you, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lance Condeh, representing the Bosom Gospel of Chester, located at two oh one East Seventh Street. I just want to inform the city of our upcoming events. We are having a faith-based workshop on September twenty from eleven AM to three PM to fight against drug abuse. It is located here at City Hall in the community room on September twenty-first from nine AM until two PM. We will be hosting, we will be hosting a community health and wellness fair located at the Bosom Gospel of Chester. And lastly, we will be starting an original play called Choices at the Media Theater on September twenty-ninth at two o'clock PM that costs us ten dollars as a fundraiser to support youth activities at the club. All these events are developed by our Drug Free Communities Coalition.
Mr. Lance, can you tell me what I said again?
Condeh, K-A-N-D-E-H.
K-A-N.
D-E-H.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Lance, did you say those dates were September twenty, September twenty-first, and September twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Lance, will you be in the play?
Yes.
Got to start a role. We'll work on it. We're going to. Yeah, I think we have, I think Sam and I have the invitation, so we make sure we be, you know, do our best to be able to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Brown William. I live twenty-six, twenty-seven, plus six feet. I'm here because we have a lot of problems on the west end. I know you hear about it. One of my grandbabies got shot a couple weeks ago. And that ain't nothing to worry about when they shooting kids. What we gonna have to do, load up like the people do down south, or what we gonna have to do? Because look like anybody doing that. You know, down south, you protect your family. Up here, a lot of people okay. They love one of their own. And that's bad. And another thing here, back down my house, we need the weeds and trash cleaned up like them fellas was shooting down there. Day before yesterday, the place we clean up, them cops out there catching. But they can't run through there and weed, weed it out. And all upon the railroad there. When the mouse up in there, I used to be pretty. But back there, they don't clean up no more. They must break the trash down. All you need to do, front end loading two man and a dump truck. Clean up, I worked construction, like fifty-something years. I know what it take to do it. And like a lot of these old houses around here, have done landlord, ain't gonna fix them up, damn not. I get them on the saw high. You ride off, I see you riding. And you know it ain't them saw high. Come down Curlin Street, you get filthy curlin, that whole corner need to be teed out. You go down Third Street by Elson, that need to be teed out. I could ride, I could ride around and show you a whole lot of them. If them landlord ain't gonna fix them up, damn not. And no damn have that stuff. Because a lot of charge them kids top money for section eight, plus them kid gotta give them two or three hundred dollars. That should be against the law. It's against the law down south. Should be against the law. When the government damn, that should stand and be efficient. Now, let's say they don't know. You ain't got a house in Chester on Thursday, what more thirteen and twelve hundred dollars? Should be two or three hundred dollars. Ain't nothing there. If I been home, should be the same way. It's a disgrace with things being running in the city. Because I know you scared of doing it. And you should be able to do it. You got education, you ain't no fool. I don't think so. We need things moving in this city. Little kids, they just shoot this down when I was coming up the street. That don't make sense. You ain't got nothing for the kids to do. You let a landlord, everybody get all his money out to sell it. And if you ain't got nothing, they got a football down there to the park, they charging kid just about two hundred dollars for a football. But we had to give him, you didn't have to pay about twenty-five, fifteen dollars. How you got five kids, you had to pay two hundred dollars? That's a thousand dollars. You got a forty-bill. It shouldn't cost that much because you don't buy nothing from them. You know that, Mr. Kirk. When you play ball, you just be down there when we played down there for last year in Old Square. It ain't cost that much to play. You get a run for two or three dollars. That's it. I can see a kid paying seventy-five to a hundred dollars. That should be another money. The little cheerleaders paying a hundred something out, that's a disgrace. And we the poorest city in the country. Very cold city. We was in town in New Jersey now. We used to be better. So something should wake up, it's really cold, because it's cooking. You gonna let you go, and he's right right out, he's a landlord and stuff, with his slicks. And I think all the way out to city, we'll be holding hands. Nobody can. So I hope they all wake up and know we speak. Because God knows we need help. You know it, none of them. I come up Sucker Street down there, I'm in the people from Chester, be high on, on that place they got that Nitty Billy, on Broome Street, wasn't the same as well. They're from Chester. And know we have a problem and they come here. See, the first thing they just said, they got a background problem, but they know that when they come here. So it's, it's God's reveal, who in the hell is man after here? So you got to repent, maybe, and start over again. But is everybody have lost faith?
I mean, you said a lot, you said a lot, Mr. Williams.
I let somebody miss anything.
Let me just say this, number one, um, we have put in place, and we have some businesses here that have hired a number of Chester residents. The facility that you're talking about right now, Agnew, I was in the House of Representatives when this issue first came up. When this issue first came up, folks want to talk about, um, are persons qualified for the positions. We have people here in this city. Let me just, I, I don't buy that when folks say we are not qualified. Everybody in this room is qualified. Everybody in this room is qualified to do any job.
If they understand.
And that's, that's number one. We are, we have been moving in a direction that allows and affords our residents, our young people as well as our older persons, to obtain employment in this city. And there are none of us facilities that have already been built and up and running. We have one more coming with the old community hospital that's gonna hire between three hundred and forty residents. And they're gonna train them before they start the hiring process. We just had a workforce development opportunity for Harris. Harris executives came here, they worked with our residents, showed them exactly what they need to do to get the jobs, how to talk, how to walk, everything. And so they came here and walked our residents through it, and they were very excited about the field that they got from the residents, knowing that they are now prepared to receive those jobs at Harris. So when folks say that folks are not qualified, we have very qualified persons here in this city. We just want them to align themselves. As far as banning and outlawing homes and absentee landlords, we had one of the books for the first time whereby we go after an absentee landlord by where he or she lays their head. They live in New York, we're going to lean their properties in New York. They live in California, we're going to lean their properties in California. So we have actions already in place under this administration. And you say something about kids not having anything to do. This was the, this summer.
Hey, too much.
This summer, more youth activists had a, for the first time, a free, free carnival where hundreds, literally hundreds of kids lined up right out here, free, all downtown Chester, just a few weeks ago.
Let's see, ninety-five percent of the kids, this kid got my clothes over here. Because you know I didn't, what it going on?
Ninety-five percent of kids were over here, sir.
I ain't see it.
Because you weren't giving them.
And I ain't seen nothing in the news, Bill. So another thing, over the, over the water department.
Who was it, Howard?
Over the water department.
Over the what?
The water department. Like the water company.
Who's over there?
Yeah. Says on the city council.
Nobody, the city council sits on the.
Okay. Well, I have to check it down. Because they leave water running in front of my door for eight months. I went over there, came down and tell them, they wouldn't shut it up. I was down the miles to look at it and see what you're doing.
I know, I know, you know, that we take the blame for everything, but.
I didn't say you're the blame, I didn't ask, I said, who over there? That's why I asked that question. And the way it should be asked. Because something, usually be a council member over just about everything runs in the city. That's why I asked you. They come on the street department or what they come on.
No, that comes under the water department.
Okay. And then I heard something this week by someone, by the secretary of this month, Delco would be sold and dragged down the street.
That's a meeting they have now. That's a meeting they have now.
Well, that's why I heard it. I don't know how true it is. So I want to get it from the salt spot. See, I call you the salt. And they make sauce, your dish, but you're thinking, well, you see the work. All right, thank you, Mr. Kirk.
You're welcome. And I do want to say this, please, we, um, and, and our prayers, myself and the commissioner and our chief, made our way over to your granddaughter, which was in the hospital right before she was born, to her, to child, and we keep our prayer, we keep you and your granddaughter in our prayers.
Yeah, you guys, that's a pleasure, Donald. We'll load up on that. You don't trip, nothing like that, Donald.
If I have one eye, everybody be walking around with.
You're going to take, yeah, I'm, I'm your mind though. If you're a true and have a, you're going to take it out of the team.
Mr. William, Mr. Brown William, Mark Alexander and I were there two weeks ago to look at the properties behind your house. That's gonna take, that's gonna be maybe a two-day job to.
Two or three days.
Maybe. And so we are in preparations for getting that.
I think I appreciate it. Because immediately done, because if the cows got to jump through that run, they got run that weed and trash and all that, wouldn't they? Yeah, I want to get some. Thank you. It ain't what happened.
My name is Ollie Clark. I am a resident of the city of Chester. I grew up here, attended the schools here, and that's why I came back. I came back on a temporary basis, but for whatever reason, I stayed. I've been hearing a lot of concerns about all these shootings that have taken place. We all know who's doing it. There's no secret who's doing it. The residents here have to wake up. See, it's very easy to put the blame, the redirect blame towards an organization or a government entity. But sometimes we have to look at ourselves in the mirror, in order to our children, and ask ourselves, what are our children doing? We have to wake up. See, the police can't do it by themselves. We have to put a little wrap out there, we have to put all types of mechanisms in place to assist the residents with identifying these individuals. These individuals are our children, and nephews, nephews, or grandchildren, and some adults, unfortunately. When you go home, I want you to just take a second, sit down with your children, your grandchildren, your sons and your daughters, and ask them what's going on. I want you to take a look at the social media and see what's on those social media accounts. I think some of us would be rather surprised, probably shocked. You know, these officers come to work every day. And you look at these individuals, and they're hurt, and see the sorrow in these little kids' eyes. I'm sorry for your granddaughter. But the honest to God truth, nobody better than I. It's to the point now, we have seven-year-olds, fourteen-year-olds, we have a fourteen-year-old who was shot in the head, and girlie hanging on. Everybody knows who's done it, but nobody's willing to come forward. See, we don't even do so much as a police officer, because we have to follow the rules, even though I want to break the rules. See, back in the day, before all this technology and the cameras, whatever, things were different. We handled situations differently. And sometimes I want to go back to where it used to be. Okay? But we can't. So I'm not going to hold everybody up. I just want you all to think about that. What you can do to make a change. Because nothing's going to change unless you take a stand. And unfortunately, nobody gets upset in the city. Nobody gets upset. But let one of my officers do something and try to affect an arrest, and somebody gets hurt, add a whole city outside the police department, add everybody. I want you to take a look at the social media, and see what's on those social media accounts. I think some of us would be rather surprised, probably shocked. These officers come to work every day. And you look at these individuals, they're hurting, and see the sorrow in these little kids' eyes. I'm sorry for your grandma, but the honest to God truth, nobody better than I. It's to the point now, we have seven-year-olds, fourteen-year-old, we have a fourteen-year-old who was shot in the head, and girlie hanging on. Everybody knows who done it, but nobody's willing to come forward. See, we don't even do so much as police officers, because we have to follow the rules, even though I want to break the rules. See, back in the day, before all this technology and cameras, whatever, things were different. We handled situations differently, and sometimes I want to go back to where it used to be. Okay, but we can't. So I'm not going to hold everybody up, I just want you all to think about that. What you can do to make a change, because nothing's gonna change unless you take a stand. And unfortunately, nobody gets upset in, in the city. Nobody gets upset, but let one of my officers do something and try and affect the rest, and somebody gets hurt, add a whole city outside the police department. Add, everybody follow complaints, even though officer didn't do anything wrong except his job. Unless somebody gets shot out here in front of fifty people in broad daylight, and nobody says nothing. One officer gets out of the car and affecting the rest, I got every camera, every cell phone's a camera nowadays, I got every camera, everybody want to give me this video footage. An officer didn't do anything wrong except his job. But for some reason, there's no video footage, when somebody gets shot in broad daylight, and there's fifty people out there. So I want to hear conversations about what we can do to make it better. I'm tired of the finger pointing, I'm tired of it. You know, sometimes I come to work and ask myself, why am I even here? And nobody really cares. You know? America's out there, he doesn't have to go out there, he comes out there, he goes to the hospital. Aren't many mayors doing that, but he still cares. I know sometimes, you know, when I have to call him in the morning or at night to report bad news, a bad incident, I feel real bad, because I feel like I let him down, I feel like I let the city council down, I feel like I let the residents of the city of Chester down. It's not a good feeling, it's to the point where my phone goes off, I don't want to answer, I don't want to look at it, because nine times out of ten, it's not good news. Now, all these people that are out there, which is a seven-year-old girl, get shot. Nobody knows anything. They don't go to the hospital and talk to people who should care, they don't want to talk to the police. Our detectives come in morning, noon, and night, do the best they can with what, with what they have. I got people I look at every day who I know are murderers, but I can't lock them up. Thank God Crozier is here. The guy, I've had cases where we know who the shooter is. Because the person that they shot thought they were dying and gave a dying declaration, and they told us who it was. But because he, they lived, we can't act on it. I got to wait for them to die, and then we're gonna make the rest. That's screwed. Because you know what, when they find out they're living, you know what they tell us? I don't want to talk to you guys. And I can't do anything, legally. I got to wait for that person to get sick and die from a complication as a result of being shot. We got to wake up. Sorry, man, sorry, sir, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, just a small comment, I feel like I should have went before you, Commissioner. Because I didn't know how I want to follow that one up, but I think, again, I just wanted to thank, uh, all of the participants, uh, I think it was last weekend, two weeks ago, that came out to, uh, the Penn Home Healthcare, um, Playpen, I believe it was called, that participated in it, so thanks to Penn Home Healthcare. Also, the vendors, the food vendors, uh, vendors with the clothes, the jewelry, um, the companies that brought their kid activities out to home bounces, the water slides, uh, Ferris wheels, it was a very fun field event, um, it was more than two or three hundred, uh, smiles out there. So it's always good to see, uh, kids and parents come out and enjoy, uh, fun activities here in the city of Chester together as one. And then lastly, uh, we have, well, we have four months left, uh, so each month this year, uh, sorry, each Thursday, Saturday of the month this year, we have been doing our financial literacy workshops. Uh, so this month, on, uh, September twenty first, we're going to be doing a financial literacy workshop from ten AM to twelve thirty PM. Uh, this financial literacy workshop is gonna be about financial pitfalls, uh, about scams and fraud, predatory lending. So please, uh, put that in your calendars, this is next Saturday, uh, ten AM to twelve thirty PM, September twenty first. Come out, here's from some of our, uh, financial literacy experts, and hopefully you can put that into your, your personal lives. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, just one quick announcement, I don't know if the mayor announced it or not, but the mayor will be having a town.
Right.
Oh, well, uh, my name is Fred Green, uh, twelve fifteen West Third Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. Uh, just a quick announcement, the mayor will be holding a town hall meeting tomorrow evening here at City Hall at six PM, uh, for all residents and residents, so whoever would like to come. Uh, it'll be tomorrow, six PM, at the community room, all are welcome.
Good evening.
My name is Kate.
My name is Darrell Jones, I live at two thirty, Seventy Fourth Street, Chester. Where many asked today, I'm where my, um, president has president, the Chester Ranch NAACP. I want to echo, uh, what the, uh, Commissioner said, but also first of all, since September eleventh, so I want to thank, uh, firefighters of this city and the police officers for all they do. When it comes to homicide and murders and shooting, most of the times, it's personal or it's senseless. Um, you can't police that, so like the Commissioner says, you know what's going on, you have to speak up. So I want to go and break it, NAACP is with the police when it comes to any kind of cooperation the community can do, work with the police, uh. We need some transparency, I would like to see the police and civilians work together like a police civilian, uh, review board where you can review different activities that's going on in the city, because sometimes people will talk to other people, they will not talk to police officers for whatever reason. So if there's some kind of vehicle that we can put in place where civilians can help get the information that the police needs, then, uh, I recommend we do that. So again, I thank you for all that you do, Commissioner, and, uh, God bless you.
Let me have one word, uh, a couple, a few words. You know, I invested a lot of years and a lot of time in this city right here. And I've watched the people grow, and I've watched every event, uh, happen and, and whatever took place with it, and we always seen that, and it's good. So I have faith in the people, I have the great love of you, I have love of people. I think Jesus said it like that, uh, look past the fault and see what they need. So this is all what we say, is that we know what they need, we, we basically see what they need, and we're giving them what they need. And once these people wake up at the hour, and suddenly these people, uh, do care.
Do.
And once they, they die, they awaken, and come on high, there's, I suppose, carrying people on the planet, everything. So, so we want to keep the faith about the people here, and I, I thank you, yes, sir, I thank you, thanks.
Mayor, I just wanted to let everybody know that when the monument was here, uh, we had the, um, workforce development piece here with, as it pertains to a monument, we had applicants who came out from Chester, and one young lady who came out has a degree in agriculture. So we had a lot of qualified people here in Chester who have been displaced from other jobs, or they're just getting out of school, you know, but we do have qualified persons here in the city of Chester. So I just want you to know that there will be plenty of people to pick from here in the city of Chester.
Mayor Councilman, seeing no one else at the podium, this council meeting is now adjourned. Have a great day.